Good evening and bienvenue. I'd like to call the April 3rd, 2023 Newport City Council meeting to order in council chambers at exactly 6:30 PM. Present are council members Mr. Charbonneau, Mr. Wilson, Mr. Curtis, Mr. Bashan, Mr. Johnson, City Clerk Treasurer, and Ms. Laura Dolgan, City Manager. I'd like to thank you all for attending tonight's council meeting. Whether you're here in person or on the link, everyone is welcome. The second agenda item is to approve the minutes of the March 20th, 2023 regular city council meeting and the March 28th, 2023 special meeting minutes for police negotiations. I will entertain a motion to approve the March 20th regular city council meeting minutes.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Any discussion on the approval of the meeting minutes of the regular meeting? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carried. I will now entertain a motion to approve the March 28th, 2023 special meeting minutes for police negotiations.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Motion made by Mr. Charbonneau. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second made by Mr. Wilson. Discussion on approval of March 28th special meeting minutes for police negotiations. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. The ayes have it, motion carried. Agenda item three is public comment. This is the time in the meeting when the public has a chance to speak. Speakers will have two minutes to speak, and at two minutes, I'll ring a bell to let you know that you have approximately 15 seconds left to finish your thought or finish your sentence. We'll start with our only one this evening, and that's Mr. Dennis Chanet speaking about agenda item seven. Thank you, Mr. Chanet.
Madam Mayor, I was gonna make the comments at that time because it would involve knowing what your motion is for. So I can wait until that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chanet. All right. So moving along to agenda item number four is to clarify parade vote from February 6th, 2023. At this time, I'll ask the city manager to read her memo entitled Clarification of Parade Vote from February 6th, 2023, just to give us all a little idea of the clarification. Do you have one?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Yep, so this is for context. On February 6th, 2023, the council meeting minutes reflect the following vote for the 2023 parade request as follows. Quote, "The city received five parade requests. The city only funds four requests per year. Mr. White withdrew his request for funding but would still hold a parade. Mr. Bashan moved to approve the 2023 parade request, seconded by Mr. Charbonneau. Motion carried unanimously. Internally, the city manager and department heads interpreted this vote as approving the four funding requests as that is all that is required from the council based on the events policy. We did not interpret the wording of this vote as the council had approved all five parade requests. We understand that some clarity is in order. When we met with Phil on March 16th, 2023, per the events policy, it was with the understanding that the department heads are responsible for safety and coordination of all events that are required to file a permit, including parades. Since then, we've come to understand that council members interpreted this vote as approving all five parades. We have no intention of undermining council votes." Let's see. "We now understand the city council voted on February 6th to approve permission for all five parades, assuming each parade meets all of the events policy criteria, including Phil White's privately funded parade. Our most important priority is safety for public events. Parades require a substantial amount of manpower amongst all departments in order to maintain best practices for safety of participants, spectators, staff, and vehicular traffic. The weekend of July 28th has many trained staff already on planned annual leave. That has been approved. In order to prevent this type of misunderstanding in the future, we will recommend amending the events policy so that any required votes are exceptionally clear to all." So one thing I'd like to do is, I saw that Travis, Chief Bingham, is here. And I just wanted to ask Travis for a brief interpretation of what you expect that evening to be like on July 28th. It's a Friday.
Yes, so the city manager kind of hit it on the head for us, so I'm responsible for public safety at any event that goes on in the city. We accommodate most of the parades that do happen within the city. For that particular weekend, that Friday night is gonna be difficult for me to get adequate staff, for me to be in a position that I can say, yep, we can pull this off in a safe manner. Something that happens, that falls back on me, okay? I don't wanna put myself in that position, or my staff for that matter. I'm gone that week. My sergeant, who's second in command, is gone. We're gonna have two people dedicated the following, the next day, Saturday, out on the boat for 10 hours for the Kingdom Swim. We have a parade the following week, the 5th. It's just a heavy lift for us, and I just wanna make sure that if I put my name out saying we're gonna do something, that I have it covered, and that public safety obviously is a priority for us. So that's why you'll see in the parade request, I actually said no. It's the first time I've ever said no to anything, any event in the city that we can't cover. And it was for those reasons that I just explained.
Thank you, Chief.
Yeah.
Did Mr. Burnham want to say anything?
I can certainly speak to that, too. I also put in there that that's gonna be a hard time for me to get staff in order to, I mean, you can't ask people right now to say that they're gonna be there that weekend. I won't be here either that weekend, I mean, as far as...
I'm sorry, Tom, you've got your form, and who's I'll leave, and you're on leave.
Correct.
And that's what we're mostly worried about. So I just wanted to let the council know that that's gonna be our dilemma. And now that the council has heard that, I would be looking for another vote to say, yes, go ahead with this.
So I will entertain a motion. Thank you for your comments.
I'd like to rebut the list of what we've done.
Do we do that after we take the motion, have a discussion, or do we continue the discussion now?
I'm happy to hear from John Wilson anytime.
Okay.
All right. On 3rd of February, Mr. Brown wrote this, "Five parade permit requests for 2023 have been received. The municipal budget supports and funds up to $1,000 for four seasonal requests." And I underline, "Any other approved parades above the four must be funded by the requestor." So on the 6th, and I will read the minutes, and I, I heard the parade one. Parade request, this is from 6th February. "The city received five parade requests. The city only funds four requests per year. Mr. White withdrew his request for funding but would still hold a parade. Said he would fund his own. Mr. Bashan moved to approve, seconded by Mr. Charbonneau. Motion carried unanimously." So the word interpreted, that the council members interpreted it, we knew it was for five parades. And then on the 26th of March, the 16th of March, Mr. White, I guess, came and talked with the city, and next thing you know, we're getting an email saying that the, Phil White's, his parade had been disallowed. We didn't put it on the next issue because that was the new mayor's first meeting, and she wanted it to go well with no controversy whatsoever. So now we're bringing it to this meeting. But on the 24th of March, in a meeting right here, here was my concern. The council had approved the parades, all five. At that time, I informed the city manager and her staff that they do not have the fourth right to override the council of all. The council approved five parades. There was no misinterpreting in my head. We approved all five, knowing that Mr. White would have to fund his own. So then on the 24th, that same day, but I was kind of crude when I informed the city manager, she can't override the council. The only way you can override something is to bring it back before the council. Let me read an email I got from the former mayor on the 24th. "I read with interest the controversy over Phil White's parade and how his was denied by the city manager. I want to pass along that it was my understanding that we approved all five parades, with only being four funded by the city. Phil withdrew his request for funding but wanted to hold a parade with the understanding he would need to pay for everything. Also, I thought all final decisions regarding parades were the councils and not the city And then we, I think everybody got an email from Mr. White dated 2 April saying that he wants his parade and he's prepared to pay for it. And what came out of this was, the city knows that the council has, makes a final decision, but that we are going to relook the parade policy, hopefully amend it where there'll be no confusion or no misinterpretation. Hopefully, if we get it right, it'll be no question. We're hoping it's gonna be similar to like a coin drop request. But there was no muddling in my mind that we approved all five parade requests. As far as I'm concerned with all the public outcry and what's in the newspapers, it's great that people are interested, but they know if not sometimes, but they're real quick to jump on the bandwagon, to throw daggers at people. But we approved five, and in my world, he has a parade. And we'll work out the logistics with the city if, on a revote, the council decides to let you have the parade. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Does anyone have any further comments? I have one comment that I did, I was concerned, and I did visit every merchant on Main Street and got a resounding thumbs up, that anything that would bring life to the Main Street would be deeply appreciated by all of them. So I think we got a little out of sync. Was I supposed to...
That's okay.
Yeah, okay, so now I'm gonna call the motion. Okay. After hearing the city manager's clarification and the discussion, I will entertain a motion to approve the Kingdom Games Pet and Swimmers Parade scheduled for July 28th.
Miss Mayor, I will make that motion that we allow the fifth parade request from Mr. Phil White.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Do I hear a second?
I have a second that, as Mr. White has described, that we will pay for all the necessary security measures.
Thank you, and we'll let the minutes reflect that. Thank you, Mr. Charbonneau. Do I hear any more discussion?
Could I raise something? I just wanna make sure that Mr. White realizes that we need a registration process and that all the other criteria will need to be followed, and I would ask that to be reflected in the minutes as well.
So was there, so the information that he already filled out is no longer valid, or is this something new?
No, the information is valid. When you do a parade, you have to have a registration process, and the registration process gets shared with us so that we know exactly how many people to expect.
Okay.
So that's all part of that.
Okay. I'm sure that will be easily done. Thank you.
I just have a couple logistical questions.
Yeah.
It's my understanding you're going to go through the ADA for traffic-wise?
If there's staff shortage, plus security, or coning and directing, I've already written with ADA that they're licensed to direct traffic. They're willing to step in and do the job to the extent that the city is understaffed.
Under issues, not issues, sorry. Life, living lines, would they become under their own license or without upon the city? Something could happen.
We have to get insurance. Last time we did a parade in 2021, I think it cost about $4,000, or $400 through the League of City in Towns.
That was just my thing.
And Travis. Thank you. Chief Bingham?
Yeah, I just wanna add on to that. It's all fine and good if ADA comes in and does that. I think you'll notice that every parade that we've ever done, there's a cruiser with blue lights at the front of it and one at the rear, all for a reason, okay? I'm not saying it's not an option, and I guess that's up to you guys if you decide to do that. There's a reason I filled out that back sheet, and I'm not sure if anybody had read that or not, and the comments that I made in there. That's the reason that those comments are in there, for safety reasons. ADA does not have a cruiser. They cannot go down Main Street in front of a crowd. Like, they can't. And it's just really that simple. So that's, if you guys decide to go that route, I'm not training them. They don't know how to set up the cones. They don't know how to have people march down Main Street. That's not what they're for. That's our job. So I just wanna put that out there so you guys are all aware, and I'll leave it at that.
May I ask a question, Chief Bingham?
Sure.
So where exactly is, is the starting point is right here? Is this right? And then the, and then it terminates at the light down by the trout, or?
Garden Park. So those from field, they start on Field Ave, go down Main Street, through Railroad Square, cross the causeway, into Garden Park. So there's major intersections at the end at Coventry and Main, and then there's another major one at Railroad Square, and that's where traffic's flowing as the parade's going on.
So Kingdom Games, Mr. White, have you, have you thought about maybe rerouting it so as not to have to go down Railroad Square? Or, I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there.
I've worked with ADA for the Dan Line Run, and they cone a large section of Route 111 and direct traffic at three or four different intersections. I think that they, they've come up with a plan that we would obviously submit to the city for where the cones go. They're fully capable of following the plan and setting up signage to the extent that is needed, again, assuming that staffing is less available for the city, and I understand that. So I was following the designated parade route that all other parades follow. So I think that's the simplest thing for the city to work with us on a plan, but we're amenable to changing it.
No, it was just, just asking, since this is my first experience with the fact that we're doing this. Is there, is there an ambulance on site when that's happening? Or what happens if, if there's a medical event or an event? Is it just the Newport City that would be called, the ambulance?
Yeah, we would call the Newport ambulance.
Okay. Okay.
I have a couple things.
Okay, please.
Well, Mr. Johnson.
Is your hand up this one?
No, no.
I thought you were just resting.
I'm holding my pen, though.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I got something to say, you don't know.
So, Chief Bingham?
Yes.
You only need two police officers.
No.
I'm sorry. One police officer for each cruiser.
Correct.
If you were in front and back.
For that part of it, yes.
You cannot find two police officers for a half hour that day?
Well, I've explained that I'm gone, the sergeant's gone, there's two on shift. If they're tied up on the column of Friday night in July, pretty sure they're gonna be tied up. I can't rely on them. I have to bring other people in to be able to do that. We usually have for any parade, I'll put an officer at the intersection of Coventry and Main, and then another one at Railroad Square because those intersections are busy. And if you see a cop stand there with a vest, they still will go through the cones. So like, that's, like, it takes at least, minimum for me, at least four. I usually do it with six.
Police officer?
Yes. And it is difficult. Like, we do 4th of July, we do all the other events that go on. Like, these guys, their time off is their time off, and like, I can't order them to come in and work on a Friday night. And I try, I know we already have the four that we do, right? And they're super helpful, and I usually try to come in for all of them, and I'm not gonna be here that day. That's why I'm more reluctant than normal, because I'm just not gonna be here physically.
How do you feel about ADA? So I, I try to look at both sides.
Right.
So I understand everything you say about, in the past, a parade. Now it's six people. How can we make this work with your nod so he can have his parade? What can you, I'll tell you, I already know of two police officers that are willing to work.
You've asked them yourself?
I have.
Handy. Here, here you go, it's all yours.
No, sir. If they would be available.
Like, that's my responsibility, right? Like, that's my job. And like, I, ZDA, they could probably come in and do this whole thing, and you're totally fine, nothing's gonna happen. But what if something does happen? What's the first thing they're gonna look at? They're gonna say, "Chief, you let this happen? You weren't even here." That's exactly what's gonna happen, and I'm not comfortable with that, I'm not.
So no, it's not my job, but I know most all of your options.
Yep.
And I know a couple that said they would work. Whether you like it or not, they said they would work.
Yeah.
So how do we make this work? You would say, no. My opinion is, no, I don't want.
I said this to Mr. Wilson pretty pointed when we had a conversation. I said, "You know what? If you guys approve 10 parades, guess what? I gotta make it work." That's really what it comes down to.
So if we approve this, you gotta make it work?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
But I just want it to be known, like, my, like, what's going on internally and, like, my feelings, so I think I got it out there, and we'll leave it at that.
Yeah, thank you. I'm good.
Thank you, everyone, for joining in this...
Actually, if I could again, I'm sorry.
No, carry on, yeah. Let's keep talking.
100% agree that if something does happen and ADA's here, which 0.1% chance something does happen when ADA is here.
Lock on line.
Yeah. That does fall back on the city, at least appearance-wise and department heads and that. I'm thinking Kingdom Games brings in hundreds of people, and it does very well for the city. I'm not, I'm trying to think myself how we can make this work. Is there any way we can make this amicable for you to find an alternate route? Maybe the boardwalk, or just for this year while it seems like the staffing is not available for that weekend? I mean, this is just me asking a question, not just, not assuming anything.
Are you asking me? We, we had a period of time when we did not have a parade. We had many parades, and then we had one, and in order to alleviate burden on the city, I asked the swimmers, would they be okay just walking on the boardwalk? Or, as was suggested at my meeting with Laura, that they walk down the sidewalk. And they said they'd rather not have a parade. I mean, you're either gonna welcome them with open arms, or we'll do other things that are fun. And I've been talking to Rick, about Rick Upford Chase, about a party of some kind which would add a little bit of a wow factor to the afternoon, would be terrific, but it wouldn't replace the parade. So my hope is that we can work it out. ADA also has security officers. They have done big concerts with lots of crowd control. They have some experience with that, and, you know, I think that they could handle it. But I'm happy to work with the chief, I'm happy to work with Tom about, you know, making it work with ADA as the backbone of the afternoon.
Honestly, the parade is ceremonial, like, it is a gathering of the community, but I agree with that.
And the goal is, I mean, we call it a pet and swimmers parade, but the goal is really to involve the community. I mean, Mephisto Watershed Association will have a float, Northern Star will have a float. In the past, we've invited other groups to participate. Things can be pretty grim at times in the city, and there's a lot of life in the city as well. And the goal of the parade is to create something that you can build on year after year, to have lots of different groups participate and celebrate life on the lake, on Lake Mephisto. And that's the goal. So I'm hopeful that this will be the start of that.
Thank you.
Yeah, real quick.
I just wanna, as Travis had said, you know, we are kind of on the hook for it, and the city owns the road. If you vote for it, which I'm sure you're going to, we will make it work, but we want you to know our hurdles here. And you can put as many people as you want out there, but from Coventry down to Railroad Square, where we subdivide that road, you got two lanes of traffic, and the parade on the other side is tricky. So I'm just...
Thank you for that. I, I think we all hear everyone's concerns, and I really appreciate everyone speaking their truth about how they feel, because I think that's the only way forward when it comes to making a decision and taking a vote. And I'm sure that the minutes will reflect everything that's been shared. But I just wanna thank all of you on both sides for telling us how you feel. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
You already have.
I already did, yes. Okay, we've had our discussion. You guys are throwing me off. I'm glad you didn't do this last meeting. Yeah, okay. So hearing no more discussion, I'd, oh, sorry, so you do have your hand up?
This time, I do.
Oh, okay, okay.
Laura asked if a registration call just be part of that, that, you want that part of his motion?
It can be.
If he does, he's gonna have to withdraw.
Yeah, I don't think you have to go through that trouble.
Okay.
So I think they'll know.
So I'm going to ask for, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of approving the Kingdom Games Pet and Swimmers Parade on July 28th, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, motion carried. Yes, Chris?
Thank you, Mayor Barnes. Chris Rohr, Newport Daily, just a little bit of housekeeping for myself. What does, what other powers are ADA? Can they arrest people? Can they attract it? If they see something going on, do they have to call a law enforcement officer? And also, did the city borrow somebody from another department, either from the sheriff's department or an outside agency?
That is a question that I honestly can't answer. Travis, do you know the answer to that, or Mr. White?
I can answer part of that, so yeah.
Thank you.
They don't have any arrest powers, they don't have any authority, other than they're in a uniform and they're present at any place that they go to. If something happens, they call the police. It's really the, the pros and cons.
Thank you. Did you wanna make a comment, Mr. White, on that?
Yes, they, they do have a security division, and if, if that's something that we need to look to, or if we need to look to the sheriff's office for supplementary staffing, I'd be happy to talk about that. I understand that Chief's concerned that this is his, his watch, you know? So I wouldn't do that without his request.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So I, I'm sure then that you will liaise and get everything that needs to be done. Thank you. Yes, Chris?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So what can ADA do? Is it just traffic control?
As far as I know, it's just traffic control. I, I don't know, I've never dealt with them personally. Maybe, could we talk about that at the end, possibly? I know I'll be happy to hang around, and probably Chief Bingham will be able to.
Well, it's, it's just fine.
No, that's fine, we wanna answer your questions, but I also wanna be respectful of everybody's time here, but we'll stay clear. So the next agenda item is number five, the certification of compliance for town, road, and bridge standards and network inventory. It is as follows. "We, the legislative body of the municipality of the city of Newport, certify that we have reviewed, understand, and comply with the town, road, and bridge standards. Public work specifications and standards passed and adopted by the city council on May 4th, 2020. We further certify that our adopted standards do meet or exceed the minimum..."
the minimum requirements included in the June fifth, two thousand and nineteen state-approved template. We further certify that we do have an up-to-date highway network inventory which identifies location, size, deficiencies and condition of roads, bridges, causeways, culverts, and highway-related retaining walls on class one, two, and three town highways, and estimated cost of repair.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the annual roads and bridge standards as just presented.
I'll write that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Charbonneau, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second made by Mr. Bashan. Do I hear any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving the annual roads and bridge standards, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, motion carried. Am I the, um, am I the duly authorized?
I would sign the top line, the data, and then I would pass it around to each other, council member?
That's the stuff, right?
Uh, agenda item. Agenda item number six is...
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, you're gonna pass that around?
I'm just, didn't you say pass it around?
Yes, I didn't see that, thank you.
Agenda item six is the annual financial... Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Okay.
If you're wanting to listen, plus. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I need to be shown the way.
One, two, three, vote to go.
Thank you, yeah, thank you. Agenda item six is the annual financial plan for town highways, class one, two, and three roads, state funds. They, it is as follows. We, the legislative body of municipality of the city of Newport, certify that funds raised by municipal taxes are equivalent to or greater than a sum of at least three hundred dollars per mile for each mile of class one, two, and three town highway in the municipality. Do I hear a motion to approve the annual financial plan for town highways, class one, two, and three roads, state funds, as presented?
Some moves.
Thank you, Mr. Bashan, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Is there any discussion?
Normally, you should ask Tom about it, because he's the one...
Oh.
No, it's not.
Tom, did you wanna add anything to that?
No, this is just something we do yearly. I don't have it, unless you have a specific question.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hearing no more discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, motion carried. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? I'd like to make a motion, that we table, item number seven. Do you need us to go over it in a couple of minutes?
Okay, uh... I'm gonna have to refer to my mayor's book because I don't know what to do when somebody wants to table.
Ask for a second.
Okay.
They agree, then we table.
So, that's a motion, right?
Yes.
Okay. Do I hear a second to table agenda item seven?
Second.
Mr. Bashan, now do I take a vote? All those, oh, sorry, just, I think we have discussion, right? And then I open it?
There's no discussion.
There's no discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll just go to a vote? Okay, so there's no reason or anything, it's just?
Go and table it next meeting. I'm not taking any time, okay.
So, what is the time limit for tabling a motion? Does that mean that it comes up at the next meeting?
That's up to you and city manager for the agendas.
Okay, okay, yeah. Great, what a great learning experience.
Well, he could have identified next meeting if he, if that's a star. If not, I can't fight the time.
You haven't, you're just, I need one just second. Just wanted to look at my BLCT. Can... So, we're, so, I need some help here from people who've done this before. I don't bore you while I look for my BLCT papers. So, you, you've made a motion to table it, I just need to think this through. Mr. Bashan seconded it, and so does that mean it's just completely off, off the books forever? I, is that right?
Indefinitely, I believe.
Okay.
Mr. Shannett has more knowledge about Robert George than I.
Okay.
I think your best bet would be to table it through the next meeting, possibly. And at some point, you would have to discuss it, and either vote it up or down, depending on whatever the, is brought before.
Okay, all right, thank you.
That's what I would suggest.
I, I, that, that seems to be what, what I was looking for in my book that, that I read, that it's, you table it for the current meeting.
You have to table for some time, you cannot table something indefinitely.
Yeah, okay, so we've had the first, we had the motion from Mr. Charbonneau, we had a second from Mr. Bashan. There's no discussion, and no vote, is that right, or?
Vote, you know.
Okay, vote.
I, I just have a, a question, oh, because it seems like you could table everything by simply having a motion and a second, and I, without a reason, we could just table everything forever. So, why is this being tabled is, I think, important for the citizens to know?
Yes.
Same question, we need clarification, it's only agenda.
I'd like clarification too.
Point of procedure?
Point of procedure, I know what that means.
There, there's not, there is not discussion.
There's no discussion, okay. Okay, so we're gonna have a vote? All those in...
Can, can I just ask?
Please do.
His motion did not specify a date and time certain. Would he like to withdraw the motion and start over?
And be more specific?
Please.
Um, Mr. Bashan will have to withdraw a second.
I withdraw my second.
Okay, so...
I withdraw my initial. Let us table this until the next meeting. And that will give people appropriate amount of time.
Okay, so that's April seven, uh, April seventeenth, is that it's fading? Okay, so, you've, you've made the motion, I need a second.
Second.
From Mr. Bashan. All those in favor of tabling agenda item seven, the naming of the municipal building parklet, until the next meeting, April seventeenth, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, all those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, motion carried. Okay. Um, the next agenda item is agenda item number eight, and that's new business. Mr. Johnson, do you have any new business?
I do. Two liquor licenses, need your council's approval. I said before, they don't get the application over yet, so you don't have to sign anything.
And it is for him?
But I do need to ask, one is for the Dusset Thai and one's for Hoagies, Travis, does that have any problem with that?
Who's the other one, Sergeant? Dusset Thai, Hoagies.
So, I just need council to approve the licenses.
So, um...
Hoagies and Dusset Thai.
And these are liquor licenses, is that right?
Yeah, you're approving the application.
Yeah, um, do I hear a motion to approve the licenses for Dusset Thai and Hoagies?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson, do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bashan, and any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, motion carried. Uh, did you have anything else, Mr. Johnson?
No, that's it, thank you.
Um, Mr. Charbonneau, do you have any new business?
No.
No? Mr. Wilson?
No.
Mr. Curtis?
I was just gonna reflect on Mr. Wilson's comment about the events of parade policy. When might that be on the agenda to review?
That's gonna take a couple of weeks for us, I don't know if it'll be the next meeting, shoot for the meeting after.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Bashan, any new business?
A couple things, I noticed the purple heart signs, they're looking good.
Yeah, great.
Egg hunt, my kids had a blast at the egg hunt, it was awesome. A little cold, but you can't control that. Um, and do we have a time on the ISO, or is that being published?
Uh, we don't, yeah, we're trying to, we're trying to narrow it down.
Right, that was all.
Ms. Dolgan, any, any new business?
I do not have any, thank you.
No? Um, I'll just go through a few of the things I did since last meeting. Uh, I met, had a great meeting with the mayors from Stansted and Magog. I attended the Saint Johnsbury Neighbor Up Hub presentation, which was amazing, at the library. I had a meeting with the new director of the Orleans County Restorative Justice, very interesting. It's great to have her here in town. I joined the junior high and high school GSA students for Saturday scavenger hunt, which was fun. Yeah, and I attended the legislative breakfast this morning, which is always wonderful. And I had several one-on-one meetings with constituents, always learning something new, always learning and listening to what people have to say. Can't always help, but sometimes people just wanna talk and wanna be listened to, so it was very interesting. Agenda item number nine, old business. Mr. Johnson, do you have any old business? Mr. Charbonneau?
No.
Mr. Wilson?
No.
Uh, Mr. Curtis?
No.
Mr. Bashan?
No, thank you.
Ms. Dolgan?
No, thank you.
And I have no old business either. Agenda item ten is to set the date for the next city council meeting, which would be April seventeenth at six thirty in these council chambers. And then agenda item eleven, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I think you were having the meeting at six for a public hearing at the next meeting, if I'm not mistaken.
Right.
Is it six?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, thank you. So, I stand corrected. Agenda item ten, I'd like to set the next city council meeting for the same date, April seventeenth, at six o'clock.
So, that's a hearing, and then the meeting is at six thirty? So, it's a hearing.
But it's not a closed hearing, everybody's, yes, so the hearing at six and the meeting at six thirty. Thank you, thank you for pointing that out. Agenda item eleven, I'll entertain that motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, uh, do I hear a second?
Second.
It was, uh, Mr. Curtis. All those in favor, say aye.